It's four o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and get started with the work session. Chief Hope.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
So, I have, it's an agreement with UniFirst. They provide us consumable paper products, things like that. That center around really our facilities. Paper towels, things that, you know, restock in our restaurants, things like that. What this is, is a 5% increase that they've, they put on us. Threat not, it's, on this current bill, it's a total of just under, just over $30. On the bill, they just went up 5% on the pricing for each individual item that, that we get. Things like hand towels, hand towels, dispensers, air fresheners, things of that nature. That we stock our restaurants with. And that comes out of operating supplies, and we have that budget.
Okay.
Any questions?
No questions.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Whitey?
Good afternoon, I've got, item, let's see, it's 12D. Resolution to approve payment of a couple invoices, Bagby Elevator Company.
Excuse me just one minute, for the Chief, Chief Hope?
Yes.
I just wanna say thank y'all for what y'all do. I've said forever, it's a thank you stop, and I don't have a word, but, probably. Anyway, I want to catch where we left. And, and the decisions y'all are making, I mean, you do a great job, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank y'all for your support.
Appreciate it.
Dear, anyway, I have two old invoices from Bagby Elevator. Dealing with the old parking deck that is no longer there. Between us and Billy Carman, I don't think we have misplaced whatever. But, ones for $300, ones for $600, for what they've done.
Alright, thank you. Tan, okay. Brian?
Item 12F is a resolution to write a contract behind the window cleaning to provide labor, equipment, and materials to clean in the amount of $1,006.50 from our budgeted funds to clean gutters and downstalls.
Okay, everything's done? What's going on?
It needs to be done.
Needs to be done, okay.
We're just doing the contract right now.
Gotcha, okay. Anybody got any questions for? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Holmes, Mr. Jordan? Everybody's wondering where everybody is. Ms. Hugh Banks is out on vacation, and Mr. Griffin is out sick.
How are y'all doing?
Good morning.
Good. We have two items, the first item is item H, I believe. And that is to pay an invoice for Chad Co. pools. And this was preparing the handy recreation pool to open. And they did some testing, some cleaning and repairing. And that amount was $2,850.80. Next item is I, and this is an invoice for certified alarm for some repair work they did at the Blackberry Trail Card Barn. And that amount is $3,858.40. Any questions?
That's it.
Thank y'all very much, have a good, happy weekend.
Just, for, for the record.
Yes.
We've had some questions, people concerned about if we had showers or sprinkler systems that when people get out of the, the pool to get the chlorine off. And I went by yesterday, and I saw those, so, yeah, good deal.
Yes, number one outside, that was something that we, we added on there, so, yes ma'am, absolutely.
Yeah, good deal, so I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that we do have that, yeah, appreciate you.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Alright, thank you very much. You too.
David? Good afternoon, a couple things on there today. The first one is two contracts with Muscles Shoals Fire Extinguisher Company. We've got a lot of fire extinguishers at Southern Way Street, and Recycle. And they come yearly and check them, certify them, and make sure that they're okay. So this is just the general contract for that work. The second is a general services contract with all equipment incorporated to maintain, this is for servicing and problems that may develop at the fueling center at the landfill, and also the fueling station at Recycle. So this is, it puts them under a general contract, coming to fix a broken gauge, or holes, or whatever that may be busted, so they don't have to come through these contracts. Any questions on those two? They gave you a brochure on hazardous waste day coming up on the 12th. And so, we look forward to that, we had a good turnout last time, and hopefully have another one this time. So if you have any questions, you call our office, or ask Rachel.
Rachel, okay, thank you very much.
Hey, can I ask you a question about that? How, how are we getting word out about that?
Social Media, obviously, she was on the news yesterday, Times Daily, we'll continue that with radio.
And the sponsors again are?
Uh, we got, I'll throw you a thing there. We got PBA, Foggdale County, South Texas this time, Muscles Shoals National Air Force.
Well, just, just tell the mayor how it really is. Well, David.
So it's really well turned out last year.
Last year, we had traffic backed up to Veterans Drive, and we circled time to boot a parking lot there, so that we could get as many people in. People come early, and, you know, if, if we have a big turnout, we, we do have a limit on the money. So once we reach, I think it's $30,000 that we have, we will have to turn people away. But, that didn't happen last time, we came under that, and hopefully we'll get everybody in this time.
And just for the record, for those who are listening, this is a perfect opportunity for everybody who have all this extra acceptable items.
Yes.
That's around your home, your, around your property, this is a great time to bring it, where it doesn't cost you anything.
Correct.
It costs.
Yeah.
Costs it.
We've got a $30,000 budget in there. So, this, yeah, paint is the number one thing that they bring, paint, paint there, any of that kind of stuff.
Auto-haul.
Probably 80% of it's paint.
Yeah, it's a good time to clip y'all's properties.
Yep, and after your garage.
He didn't give you a hard time.
Well, I didn't ask him.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
And I see that Mr., Mr. Tan has walked in, and, and so you guys have missed your time, so you're out, kidding, just kidding, kidding, kidding.
I'm okay with that.
Come on down, Tan. It's good when you can come to work session, and come to council meeting, and you can laugh.
I try, it's afternoon, I apologize for being a little bit late, I lost track of time. So I have one item on the consent agenda today, it's a quote from Simpson Plastering LLC, in the amount of $5,843.50. This work has been performed, we deemed this an emergency while we were in the process of coating the clearwell at Cypress Creek Water Trippl Plant. These folks were on site and available, so we went ahead with that. And it, it, this was for the injection of a 36-inch pipe in our ethyl pipe gallery that connects the plant to the clearwell. And, so, we went ahead to perform this work, and so we need approval to get this $5,843.50 bill for Simpson Plastering paid. But that, good news is, is all of the work that we've performed has worked, the plant is up and running and functioning correctly, just in the nick of time, because the heat of summer is a bonus, and we are, this is no exaggeration, the, the day the plant went back online, within 48 hours, consumption went up over about three meter gallons. So it was, at the time, it could not have worked out any better, so it worked out great. Any questions on that? Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President, I have one item on the agenda today, it is under consent agenda, it is item G, and it's consideration of the resolution to move forward with Nurse Navigation. I'm just gonna hand you all these for just a second, you should have received an email with some more detailed information last week. What I'm handing you now is, what I'm handing you now is the past month EMS runs within our system. And you'll see that over the last month EMS responded to 1,017 calls for service. And so what Nurse Navigation does is, it really fills a gap where EMS right now is very much aligned with a public safety model. Under that public safety model, it's first come, first served, it's one size fits all, and it sends all, it's based on sending all resources available. So if a fire alarm goes off, we send all resources. If there's a police matter, we send all resources. And that really doesn't align with the healthcare industry, and within the emergency healthcare model, it's designed based on the sickest patients get addressed first, it's tailored services based on clinical need, and it's utilization of resources only as needed. What we've tried to do within the ambulance contract review committee, and then working with Mayor Betterson and Chairman Pettis, and the 911 Board, is look for solutions that are reasonable within the scope of our areas of responsibility. Basically, how can we get response times down, number one? And how can we be, or rest assured that when that moment comes when a citizen needs an ambulance, that ambulance is available? And I think this is a good solution for us. This process, or Nurse Navigation as a program, has been vetted by the committee, it's been approved by the ambulance review committee, it's been approved by the 911 Board, and most importantly, I think in this case, it's actually approved by the hospital. What Nurse Navigation does is working with our medical professionals, we design a criteria so that when someone calls 911 and says that they need an ambulance, based on the information and the questions that the dispatcher asks them, and the responses that they give, we give them an opportunity to speak to a live nurse. We don't force anyone to do that, but as you'll see on there, I've highlighted two areas, really that jump out. One is, is what we call MD pain, which is just generalized pain, so my leg hurts, my stomach hurts, my head hurts, I don't know why. And then the second is minor falls, so I've fallen, my hip's hurting, I've fallen, my arm's hurting a little bit. And that person may not need to go to an emergency room, but they probably do need to speak with a medical professional, they probably do need to have other options. And so what Nurse Navigation does is it allows us to put them in contact with a nurse, that nurse is state certified, that nurse will go much deeper than a 911 dispatcher could ever go, get medical history from that individual, and then make determinations. That call usually lasts between eight and 10 minutes. Then, working with our local emergency health groups, I guess the best term is docking boxes that we have throughout the county, and throughout the city of Florence, then we match that patient with that right caregiver, then pass that through the program. They provide a transportation, which is usually Lyft or Uber, for that patient from that location that they're calling from, to that doctor's appointment, they stay with them at the doctor's appointment, transport them to get any medication if they have, a pharmacy refill that needs to be done, and then transport them back to their residence. And it's at no additional cost to the consumer. There is a cost that's associated with this program for government, and that upfront cost total between the city and the county is $70,000. So that would be split equally, $35,000 to the city, $35,000 to the county. And we'll say that this has gone through the county commission, and the county commission has approved it. Then from that, we estimate that approximately 60 calls per month from the city of Florence will qualify for Nurse Navigation. The charge for each call that comes back to us as a service fee is $80. So that would result in a monthly cost to the city of $4,800, and a yearly cost of $57,600. Now, put that in comparison to what it would cost the city to add one full-time ambulance to the system, and that's $954,000 per year. So you have substantial savings. The other savings that's realized, and that I think it's important to know, especially for you and your positions, is that if I send an individual to the hospital, that hospital has a set of standardized tests that they're going to run. Whether the patient needs it or not, this is part of the standard protocol within that facility. That then creates a debt for that individual. What we hope will happen, and what has been proven in the other 26 markets that this is active in, is that debt number decreases, and as, as a result of that, that citizen has an opportunity to then take that money that would have to go towards debt servicing, and it's reinvested back into the community in the form of sales tax or other expenditures that happen through the city. So we help on both ends. What we see a lot is that there are a number of individuals throughout the community that will call 911 for one of two reasons, one, they either don't have a primary care physician, or two, they think that if they ride on the ambulance, that they're gonna move to the front of the line. That's not true, because as we talked about earlier, the emergency medicine model is sickest gets first served, not whether or not a ride an ambulance. So what's happening within our system is those individuals who think that they're gonna get in first are taking that ambulance ride, but then that ambulance is having to hold on to that patient at the hospital until a bed frees up. And we're having wait times at the hospital anywhere between 45 minutes to two and a half hours. Now, that's not regular, but that is throughout the month at least 10 to 15% of the time. So by doing this and putting this kind of into perspective, within the other markets that this has been implemented in, they've increased the number of available unit hours between 100 and 200 unit hours per month. What that means is decreased time for our residents in getting ambulance service, and increased availability for those ambulances when you need them. A great example happened last week to a resident in an apartment complex off of Chisholm Road who called in with chest pains, because all of our ambulances were tied up, Florence Fire Department and a rapid response vehicle from the ambulance service had to sit with that patient and provide care for that patient inside their apartment for almost an hour and 20 minutes before an ambulance was freed up to transport that person to the hospital. Had something like this been in place, I'm confident that the ambulances would have been available to make that run much, much quicker. Any questions?
Tell, say, give that total again, what you said, if we were to have an ambulance, what would the cost have been?
$954,000 per ambulance. And that's based on two things, one, the quote that we received from AMR, we've spoken to other ambulance services, and they agree that that number is comparable, as well as the information that was provided to the city through the Fitch and Associates study earlier this year.
And this cost, this is gonna be split between the city and the territory?
Yes ma'am, the cost, the startup cost is $70,000. That pays to bring the system into our community, it pays for the marketing of the system to our community, for the relationships to be established between those, those emergency health providers, the docs in the box, and other resources within the community, as well as recruiting and bringing opportunities for Lyft and Uber into the community. So residually past that, you know, what we would, what we would expect is that that service wouldn't, would hence increase in the city as well.
But contacts will not be local? When you call, they'll pass you to somebody who's not?
Yeah, Alabama, Alabama is a nursing contact state, so our nurse, our licensure within the state of Alabama is recognized by a number of states. The two call centers for this program currently are in Dallas, Texas, and in Washington State. We would go through the Dallas Center, but all of the nurses would be licensed Alabama nurses. And then, of course, the safety net for us is if our 911 dispatcher triages a call and pushes them to Nurse Navigation, once they speak to that nurse, if that nurse believes that our dispatcher got it wrong, they'll immediately transfer that patient back to 911 and send it ambulance. I'm sorry, Council.
Actually, I, I know when we've had discussions in the, in the contract, with the paying for the expenses, how much saving would this be?
It's gonna help the ambulance, eh? AMR, whatever.
Yes sir, I think, and in, in talking to Mr. Howard with the hospital, I think what this does is really kind of threefold. One, it cuts down on the wear and tear of the paramedics and the medics that are on those trucks who are just running nonstop. When they get into that scenario or that situation, and you've got fatigue, fatigue means a lesser quality of care, so I think it helps with that. Two, within the hospital itself, the hospital has recognized that they are wasting a lot of resources on patients who really don't need those additional resources, which takes away from patients who does. So there's a benefit to the hospital in doing that. And then from the city's perspective, the study that we conducted earlier this year showed that instead of having six ambulances, we needed a minimum of nine. With this program, if it does and performs the way that we believe that it will perform, it will add 1.5 ambulance, or qualitative ambulance, back into the system, which will get us much closer at a much less cost. Again, you're talking about $35,000 on startup, and, you know, $50,000 plus or minus per year in comparison to $954,000 for just a single ambulance unit.
Saving about 800 times as a year.
I think so, plus with what Chief Harrington is doing within the fire department, I think all of these pieces align to, to provide for us a, a system that we think can work.
So the ambulance services, they, they, they like it. I know when we're doing the contract, you know, like we've got a lot of ambulance service.
Yes sir.
But they're, this will show that we're supporting them, and...
Oh, absolutely, and, yes sir.
So they're, I understand they're doing a really great job.
They are, they are, and, and you can see by our response times, our response times right now, and this is across the entire 911 network, is between 12 and 13 minutes. In a perfect world, we want to get that down to at least nine minutes. And if we can take some of these calls and be able to put the right size of the service for the patient, then I think we're gonna see a significant decrease in those response times as well.
So one of the things I love about this, 'cause I had spoken with Mike at the hospital about asking the question once before about why can't they triage and have like a doc in the box, and then ready, that it's simply not allowed to.
Right.
So this will provide some of that triage in advance.
Yes sir.
So that hopefully folks aren't going to the most expensive place to get care for a head coat. You said $80 a call.
Yes sir.
Who pays for the Uber?
That's part of that $80 cost.
So that's included?
That's all, that's fully inclusive, yes.
Okay, and then, is there anywhere in this year's budget year, which we're rapidly coming to the end, that these dollars are, are in the budget, or is this something that's an unbudgeted item at this current time?
It is an unbudgeted item at this current time.
Okay, so we'd have to make a decision to do it now, or wait and do it at the beginning of budget year?
Yes sir.
Okay, alright. I think that's all I got.
And there's about a 90-day, just, just for reference, there's about a 90-day turnaround from the time that the contract is signed until implementation, and that's to go through the process of establishing those relationships.
So if we waited until, you know, budget, you know, September, October, somewhere around in there, we'd be looking at after the first of the year.
Yes sir.
When it would be implemented, right?
Yes sir.
So would, would the payment be due now, or would it be due when it's implemented in 90 days? 'Cause that puts us close to the beginning of the budget year. Sorry if that's...
No, 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 I was... I was trying to see if in the agreement, it laid that out. And it, the only language that I'm seeing just right off is... So, so the, for the invoice for the first $70,000 will be made when the contract is fully executed. It's due 30 days from the date of invoice per the agreement. So if we did this now, then myself and Mr. Musgrove and Mr. Smith would negotiate the language, we will probably be looking at middle of, end of July to have the contract executed, which would make the $70,000 due the end of August. Okay.
Any additional questions?
Alright, thank you, Madam President, thank you, Council.
Mayor.
I actually have two items, the first one is, is N, 12N, and it's a resolution to approve an amended contract agreement with NACOD, provide technical and professional assistance for the administrative requirements of the state of Alabama Land and Water Conservation Fund, sponsored by me. And the issue is, ADECA has asked for some corrected language, this contract has already been approved, but they need some language change. So it really does nothing except clarify that for what ADECA needs, and it's been vetted by us to move forward. So we're just asking that you basically reapprove the contract. That's the $437,000 we're getting for the land award grant for the, for the campground.
Any questions?
Any question? Alright, the other, it's not on the list, but I just want to let you know, regular agenda 13A is ordinance to approve a lease from the city of Florence at the Children's Museum of the Shoals Inc. for a term of 20 years, and that's sponsored by me as well. That contract was up, and we're just basically redoing that contract for 20 years, and it's, they pay us a dollar a year, it's right there at the guy, and I'll have to say it's very, very well-used, and we've got great staff, great volunteers, and I'm very pleased with that. Also, at first, we looked at who could be on the board, it's not, we don't make any board appointments from the council, it's a standalone board, and they make their own appointments. Any questions?
How long was it, for, 20 years to...
It's 20 years as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Musgrove?
Good afternoon, council members, I have two resolutions on the regular agenda today, and one is for the reappointment of the municipal judge, Chris Smith, and one is for the reappointment of Heath Traustall, who is the municipal prosecutor. They, the terms are two years, and they've expired, and both of them are doing an excellent job, and so I recommend strongly that the city council reappoint him for another two-year term. They both know their jobs really well, they've both been there. Heath's been there for several terms, the prosecutor, and Chris Smith's been the judge for, gosh, I can't remember when he was appointed, but he's been there for a while too. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions about the downer of the court. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Bailey?
There is a public hearing tonight for the ordinance to rezone on County Road 47. I believe this was inadvertently left off on the first iteration of the agenda, but then it was called pretty quickly, so hopefully y'all have an updated agenda. It happens. So this is 13 and a half acres on County Road 47, it's undeveloped property, and the, the applicant is AP3 LLC. This has actually gone before the commission a couple of times, and, you know, we didn't have any issues with the resounding, there weren't any issues of the public hearing either. So unless y'all have any questions about it specifically, this is a pretty cut and draw case.
Yes. Where's it gonna be?
It is, if you're familiar with the Bent Brook Development, which is at the corner of Mars Hill Road and County Road 47, this would be south of, of Bent Brook.
Or just a little north of MP?
Yes, it's kind of sandwiched, it's kind of sandwiched in between MP, it sits pretty far back off the road.
Gotcha, okay.
I have a question for you too, before you go. Do we need to replace some members on the planning commission? We don't have any help, is there?
No.
Okay. And again, send me an application. He thought there was, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Since you're going last, I do have a question after the work session begins.
Okay, sure.
Could you hang up for just a minute?
Sure.
Ms. Bailey, I have a question. I know you and I, I get on to nerves because I ask you all the time.
You do not get on my nerves.
About seven points.
Yes.
Can you update us where we are with that right now, please?
Yes, so, yes, so the last time you and I talked, I think it's been maybe a month ago. It's okay. You know, you can call anytime. We were working through the design, and actually yesterday, we received what we call 50% plans. So the final design is at 50%. And this would be the time when we send out those plans to other city departments, particularly engineering, utilities, urban forestry. And we asked them to look at the details of that plan, anywhere from the plant material to the types of material we're using in the hardscape, to our construction plan in terms of traffic, and how, you know, eventually, you know, we will construct the project and see if there's any issues that they see from the materials and our construction standpoint. We have asked them to return those comments to us by the 7th, which is July.
Okay.
We like to give it a tight turnaround, simply because not only is everyone busy, but it allows us to keep the project on track as well. So if we can get it in front of them quickly and get those comments turned around quickly, then it gets it off their desk, and then allows us to continue with our plans. So what we would hope is, assuming that everyone abides by the deadline, then sometime in August, we would finalize those plans for 100%. And when you have 100% plans, that's when a decision would need to be made on whether or not the project will be bid or not.
Will be bid?
Bid, correct.
That the first part of August, the middle part of end?
Say, I'm sorry, say that again.
You said you hoped.
Probably mid-August.
Okay.
Because that would give us, because I'm having to assume there'll be some comments, but I'm also going to assume there won't be glaring comments, you know, things that would cause us to have to redesign. So that would give us a good six weeks if we had to redesign something because of an issue that a department saw or an interference. Typically, you see that in infrastructure, so utilities, if they see any kind of interference or issue, we have to redesign. That would give us enough time to do that.
Okay. And what, what, would you need anything from the council?
Not until we are, you know, ready to go to bid. Once we get those 100% plans, we'll have a solid construction estimate as well.
Okay.
So we, it would give us a pretty good idea of what we could anticipate with bids. And at that point, we can look at the funding that's already set aside in the budget, and then if there is funding that will be set aside in the upcoming budget.
Okay.
And let it work from that, from that perspective.
Okay.
But just as, you know, I probably have reminded everyone that any contract, any construction contract has to come to the council.
Right.
You know, obviously, nothing is going to happen without the consent of you all.
Okay. Y'all have anything? Okay, that's it?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Did you bring any what I asked for?
I'm going to get it.
Okay. Well, that is it. And so we've got some time for, before we start back up. So we'll take a break, and we'll start back, probably at 5:00.